Alcohol from PFM around.
Do we, do we get Meredith?
Meredith, is that you at 717-329-4133?
No, that's the DC.
That's, that's one of our consultants for the trash discussion.
All right, let's give Meredith a moment. She's logging in as I correct.
Yes, just one moment, Mr. President.
Linda, do you want to rename the 4133 Steve?
Steve, okay.
Yep, Steve DC, D E A S Y.
Hi, Meredith, it's Jamar.
Thank you. And John Colberston will be joining here, that might be him connecting now.
Brett, no whistling.
Um, Linda, Meredith is going to join via the link and separately via audio on the phone, just in a.
Okay.
All right, we'll give her a minute, we were scheduled originally for 5:30, so we are slightly ahead of schedule.
Yes, she is. Oh, Meredith sent.
Hi, Meredith. Sorry about that, I apologize for the delay, I had a brief technical difficulty, I apologize.
We're used to those.
It's a brave new world, isn't it? And so I'll get started right away, let me share my screen with you. And can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay. All right, wonderful. Um, so I'll just, I'll just jump right in, I know I'm the first item on the agenda, so, good evening. My name, for those of you who may not know me, is Meredith Brett, and I am a Senior Managing Consultant at Public Financial Management, and I want to thank you for inviting me to attend this evening's meeting to talk about the city's progress in executing the project that has scheduled for the 2020 capital budget. So on this first slide is a summary of the amount budgeted in the capital budget by department and division. One of the first things to note here is that the city's 2020 capital budget is about $13.7 million. That's the amount dedicated directly from the commuter and non-commuter EIT into the capital fund budget, and this is more than double the amount of $6.8 million that was there last year. The projects that have, that you have allocated are mostly split across four departments, administration, fire, police, and public works. And this table on the slide shows you the amount budgeted for all of those projects by department and division. Of these, the largest is public property, as you can see, which has also more total projects than any other department and division, followed by administrative services, traffic engineering, and fire suppression. So there are 72 projects in the 2020 capital budget. Of these, you will not be surprised, though, the majority are related to building and building improvements, more than half, as you can see on this pie chart here, 57%. This also includes the construction and repair of city buildings and facilities. Building and building improvements also include construction and repairs to things like fire stations, HVAC systems, and roof repairs. The, the budget also sets aside funds for vehicle repairs, like patrol vehicles, motorcycles, streets equipment vehicles, machinery and equipment, which includes items like citywide cameras or other system or software upgrades. And lastly, contracted services, which is 18%, which includes items like computer replacement and some of the LED upgrades that you have scheduled for traffic engineering. So given the current set of circumstances and where we are in the year, I think the city has wisely recognized that it's not going to be possible to necessarily do all 72 projects. So what they have done is taken a step back and what they've determined that there are 15 what they're calling high priority projects that are the focus for completion for the rest of this year. One caveat, that does not mean that they are only intending to do these 15 projects, but that these are the 15 projects that they've dedicated as their high priority. The, on the next slide, I will show you a list of all of those 15 projects, but they do include the construction of a new fire station, Nathan Marion, the improvement for the fire station at Third and Court, HVAC repairs for City Hall and the public library in Third and Spruce. Another item to note is that several of these projects, like the potagota wall repairs or buttonwood gateway, are going to take more than one year to complete. They will continue to be a high priority item for the city to accomplish in the next year as well. Combined, these high priority projects represent 19.6% of the city's capital project fund portion of the capital budget, so about, you know, one-fifth of all of the projects in terms of total budget, and another almost 20% of the grant-funded portion of the capital budget. So, this is up on your screen now. On this slide is the complete list of the high priority projects identified for the city for execution in 2020. They are in rough order of priority, as given to me by the capital projects manager. And these projects include projects for, as you can see, the fire department and the public works department, and for the suppression divisions, traffic engineering, and public property divisions. The majority of these projects, I think all but two, would be categorized as building and building improvements projects. Okay. So, this shows where the city is with regard to the spending on its capital projects. As you'll see in the header, this is as of May 4th. One caveat I do want to give here is that most of this data is essentially first quarter data. The city has continued to execute and spend on projects over the last month, and so you will continue to see this number go up the next time that we come and report to you. So on this table, you'll see the amount budgeted by each department and division, and the amount that was spent or encumbered as of May 4th. The reason we've added a new category to encumbered, and you'll see this on a later slide where we talk about what the encumbered status actually means, is that there's a number of the types of projects in your capital budget, like vehicles, where the city may have set aside the money for it already, it knows it's going to spend it, it doesn't have to go through the stages of the capital budget process that we'll talk through later about design and the procurement process, but simply their inclusion in the capital budget means that there, you're going to get a new street sweeper, you're going to get a new police car, whatever it is. And so we've added this category of encumbered because the way that the current accounting system records things is once the invoice has been processed. And so we wanted to recognize those expenditures in the city's progress to date. So if you look at this list, you'll see the city has spent 60.9% of what it budgeted for the public works garage department, a little over a quarter for the police department, and then as you see, it scales down bit by bit. Other includes some of the shade tree and trades community development vehicles, a relatively small amount. But if you look at the total, you'll see the city has spent almost 1.4 million of the total capital project funded portion of the budget for 2020, or 10.2%. Just for context here, when I came to talk to you last year about the progress the city was making with the 2019 budget, which was, I think, in late August or early September when we had that meeting, the city had spent a little bit about, maybe a little over a million dollars as of August or September. So relative to last year, this actually is an increase in spending. And the city is making progress, in making sure that it's executing its projects and spending the funds that it's allocated for them throughout the year. So this table shows the number, the total number of projects and where they stand by status. So the very first column is the number of completed projects, and that's seven. So seven of the 72 projects that the city said it was going to get done are already done, and we'll go through a list of what those are. And we actually have some photographs to show you at the end of the presentation of what some of that completed work looks like. The next column is projects in progress, and you'll see that's where the majority of projects are. And then the next column is projects not started and total projects. So, if you'll allow me, what does it mean when I say projects are in progress, right? Because I don't, we want to be clear about what this is. So in progress is the category we're using to describe anything that has been started but not yet completed. Within this, these are some of the stages that I talked about when I was talking about encumbered funds earlier. So the first phase of this process is the specification phase. And this is where a lot of the projects the city does require more technical specifications and guides coming through people that are qualified to do this in the public works department. So that's that thing, that's the specification phase. The next is procurement, which you all know very well, the Department of Administrative Services Solicitors Office, and you all have different roles in the procurement phase of the development of these projects. Then there's the design phase, which is sort of literally the architectural and design work that will guide the construction, the construction phase. And then lastly, this is the encumbered phase that I discussed before, mostly used as a categorization or a designation for projects that would never go through each of these four other stages of the process. So, let's break down the in-progress a little further and talk about the projects that you have and where they fall. So this pie chart below shows the city has in-progress more than two-thirds of the progress, projects it had slated for the 2020 year. Of these, as you can see, the majority are in the design, procurement, and specification phase. I also just want to note here, too, not started, again, doesn't mean that the city is not going to do them or has no intention of doing them. Some of the delays the city had previously with executing projects can lead to delays into this year. There's also projects that may come up and emerge throughout the year in terms of safety or other priorities that may impact the order or operation of some of these projects. And lastly, some of the work that's in your capital budget that you're working on right now has to get done before some of these other projects. So please note that just because they say not started does not mean the city has no intention of starting them. And the other thing that's great, you'll see the gray slice on the pie chart, are your completed projects. And these are the seven of the 72 that you've already done and completed throughout this year, including the repairs to the radio room at the police department, repairs to the city park basketball and tennis courts, and the second in Washington ramps and reducing lanes. Okay. All 15 of the high priority projects that the city identified are in progress, all have been started. So that's another piece of good news. The majority of those projects are in the design phase. So this is where Public Works is working on the architectural and design work that's going to guide this process, and the remaining projects are in the procurement and construction phases. As I've been working with the Director of Administrative Services and Capital Projects Manager, I also want to note that I've seen projects move through these phases this year. This is not a situation where a project is staying at a particular phase for months. There's a large amount of work it takes to get these projects done, but I do sort of want to note that, that these projects are moving through this process as it was designed and intended. And so when we come back and report to you again, I think that the pie chart may look slightly different, we're going to have more projects even in the completed phase, but I do just want to note that this is not a point in time or static data point, it just reflects where we were as of last week. So where are we now, in addition to the numbers and the data that I've shown? I want to provide a little context and then just some overall observations. So so far, the city has been able to move forward with executing capital projects despite the operational challenges from the coronavirus. The city's actually been able to pretty nimbly pivot to continue to keep projects moving despite, despite the shutdowns, despite, you know, other vendors and other businesses not being open. And I think a lot of that has to do with the decision that you all made to hire a capital projects manager to help come in and guide this process along. Both the Director of Administrative Services and the Capital Projects Manager and I have been having bi-weekly meetings where we're running through the list of the 72 projects. We've developed a tracker so that we're able to track where things are at any point in time, project by project. We're still building it out and making that a little bit more nimble and dynamic as we're working on some other things, lining up project codes and all of the rest of it. But I think that the city's decision to bring this vision on, I think, has already started to show its value, and I think it will continue to do so moving into the 2021 year. So as we're, we're sort of shifting our focus towards budget season, I do want to say the city does need to continue to move forward with this project. I don't think that's going to be an issue. I think this is an area that very much has the appropriate level of attention. And it will need to continue just to make sure that it's, all of these projects that are in progress are headed towards completion so that the city can start the 2021 budget process with a real understanding of where they are with all of their projects, whether any of the work that's being done on these projects is going to impact next year. We're also going to be working, as I said, to make that project tracker more dynamic and make it more understandable and more nimble that we can report to you all point-in-time information more quickly on where every project stands. And then as we're heading into 2021, we'll also need to be considering what the impact will be of COVID-19 on the EIT that funds a good portion of the capital budget. We don't have any assumptions on that yet, we have not started to have any conversations with anybody yet, but that will be an underlying consideration of how it might impact either 2021 or 2022, because we want to be reasonable in our estimates, not only of the work that the city can get done on its capital projects, but we, you know, we want to make sure that the projects we're executing are the ones that are of most value. And as you'll see also, again, this is my last slide before I flip over to the photographs. The capital budget right now, we made a change last year so that it also includes your Fund 35 or paving project, because we understand how much of a priority that that is to the city. Moving forward, the goal is that we'll be able to report out to you on the progress of those paving projects and include them in the tracker as well. So with that, I know that was a lot of information that, that came at you very quickly, but I do want to share with you some photographs that the city has taken of the project that has completed, and I will allow Mr. Rugez to provide any context as needed.
Thank you, Meredith. Jamar and I sincerely appreciate all the help you have given us, and then the creation of this PowerPoint has been wonderful, thank you. The, the first slide we have is Pandora, along with the next two, and, and with these, with these slides along with the subsequent slides of City Park, I'd like to thank you other people on our team. Cindy DeGroot, who is our grants coordinator for the city, along with Cindy Kastner. Those two have put a lot of time and a lot of effort in this, and they've done a very, very good job. So this, this, this point is, we showed you originally is Pandora, and if you would go to the next slide, please. This is, as I showed people originally, this is the, the completion of the ADA accessibility along with a ramp that will be going to the spray park. Next one, please. There you go, and there's the completed spray park. There is, these pads are, are, are in the final stages of commissioning, and they've done a nice job, thank you. Next slide. This is the entrance to City Park, this is where the basketball court, next. To the lighted basketball part as well, then to the right is where the repaved tennis courts are. Next slide, please. And there, this is, this is, this is very nice. The morning I was on this side at City Park is children were just going on to the park to play. It was, it was a very beautiful morning, very, probably 72 degrees, and there was a lot of mothers, a lot of fathers out, and grandparents, it was very well received. Next slide. This is the project that's under construction, it is the painting of the stair towers and the reconstruction of the stairs themselves. You can notice that through the, through the last painting, it's probably been about 30 years how the steel has degraded and actually has requiring a good amount of welding and fabrication work. And this is one picture that I took that you could see that I was a little concerned because of the weeping of the humidity onto the power. Next slide. And there's, you can see this past week that the gentlemen were mobilizing. Actually, this was probably 20 minutes prior to that torrential windstorm we had. So, they are on site. Next slide. This is Third and Court, and this is, this is slated to have a new boiler replacement. The boil that's existing is approximately 60 years old, and the replacement of a, of a lineup of electric devices. This, this picture to the right is, is probably a little older than 60 years, probably closer to 80. It's the metering gear from Med Ed, who is, can't wait till we replace. And to the left is, there's actually two of these, and they sit in the apparatus room. These are basically for, for a point, old knife switches. And the problem with these also, probably 80 years old, that if you touch them, they will either go on or off, and if they go off, you may not be able to get it back turned on. And just a very dangerous situation that we are, we are in the process of entertaining bits as we speak. Next slide. This, this is a familiar sight in Reading, or maybe wasn't familiar until now. And I have to thank Tim Croll, Tim has done an outstanding job coordinating all the new paving. You can see here that due to the degradation of the asphalt, we, Tim and his team have actually had to excavate down to the dirt level. And they put a geotextile type of soil stabilizer down, those are the round cylindrical rollups, as you've seen there. That's to the left and to the right, you can see them paving. Next slide. This is a completed section, you can see freshly paved. However, we didn't, we did not get the line struck until the next day. I can say again that Tim did a very nice job in specking this out and moving forward. Next slide.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
I don't know if there are any questions, I know you have a packed agenda, so I don't mean to insert myself more, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, well, thanks, Meredith, for the update, I think it's, it's, it's amazing, even amidst the COVID pandemic that we've been going through, that we've gotten all but 33% of these projects at least started in the pipeline. I know I told Pedro and the mayor earlier in the year that if we got through two-thirds of these, these projects this year, it would be, it would be a huge success. So, one, thank you for that update, and we will open it up for any questions from council. At this time, council, any questions for Meredith or Stan regarding the wonderful view?
Or Jamar?
It's, it's your show, it's your show.
It's our show, we all work together.
And I will remind everyone, that, that was a huge workload for one year, it's a lot of important projects.
The one item that's.
Having that many projects ever in a given year, go ahead, Jamar.
The one item I would add, and Meredith kind of alluded to it in terms of projects and process, for example, the body about a month ago approved the hardware upgrade for the IT department of server and storage. Well, you know, that's a $1.6 million purchase that has not yet hit the accounting books because of COVID and the inability to get electronics in stock. So once we're able to get those electronics, we'll be able to book that purchase, but you guys already approved that about a month ago. And for example, it's one of the various projects that are still in motion and won't materialize in the numbers for quite a while, but we are working very hard on behalf of the great citizens of Reading.
Jeff, it's March, I have a question.
Yeah.
First of all, it was very comprehensive, and I appreciated, it was a real thrill to walk by Pandora Park and see the status, even though we're not able to access it, the job was very well done. Where does the Schlegel's Pool fit into all of this?
Sure, so I will say it's, I don't believe it's, I don't, not sure if it's on the high priority project stand, is that? Is it on there, or is it?
I will be working with Cindy Kastner on that, we have, we have had some preliminary conversations, we know that is a high priority, and if you don't mind, if we would be able to get back within touch with you, please, through Jamar and Administration, with Pedro and the mayor, please.
Yeah, just a comment, and it came up at the last Rec Commission meeting, so I think Prater's probably aware of that, because the pool will be closed this year, it's an opportune time to see how much of the project can be completed.
Yeah, and I know that there is a lot of important and real concerns about being our only pool and the access and, and our, you know, the children and the young at heart, their use of the pool. It is important, and, you know, the splash pads are stepping in the right direction, don't, don't replace the pool. This, you know, the Schlegel Pool is so important to me and the administration that I dedicated a full day just last Wednesday to do a full tour of the city with Daphne Clare from the Recreation Commission and Matt, and we went all through not only Schlegel, where we were a significant amount of time, but all throughout all the parks, see all the projects that are being envisioned. And the, the reality is that there are significant repairs that are needed for Schlegel beyond just COVID-19. I note that none of our sister municipalities, none of the municipalities that have public pools are opening them, even if they're in great shape, and that's because of COVID, the requirements are very strict, such as every time someone touches a handle on the one of the bars, like by the stairs, you have to wipe it every single time, and people wearing masks, which is, is difficult. However, it is a top priority, and to, to your point, Councilwoman Goodman Hinnerchitz, our goal would be take advantage of the fact that we have COVID and all the realities this year, do it right, so that if in fact we can, you know, we, we need to wait until next year open, we do so right by Memorial Day and do it right, and give that pool the proper TLC that it deserves.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Pedro, just, just a point of clarity, so are we saying the pool will not open at all this year, or we're, we're still waiting it out?
It, it is, it is highly unlikely, but it's actually, the possibility of opening this year is a, is a top priority. I was there physically to see the pool, and I invite others to stop by and see it. Once you see it, you can understand that what has been done is years upon the years of just patching up work. So what you are looking at is to put a significant amount of money, probably, you know, in the thousands of dollars just to do a patch up job, for which you still leak about, you know, foot and a half of water every day, just, that's just like thousands, if not millions, of gallons every day, just leaking. But even if you repair it, you put all that money now only to have to redo it completely, and you might only be, be able to use the pool partially in August just because procurement and the repairs itself will take it to that point, it's already June. So I, I think more realistically is to say, just because if nothing else COVID, we, we understand that it's a challenge anyhow, and we take the time to do it right, and we don't invest money in just patching up work, but do it right for next year. That's likely to be the outcome, but it's still being looked into by Matt and others at the Recreation Commission. So we'll give you a fuller report in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Jamar, did you have, did you have some additional comments? Somebody else had a comment, I think I jumped in on somebody.
Lucine, I think.
Hi, thanks, yes, absolutely. So Meredith and Jamar and Stan, thank you, in addition to those others that you named, the Cindys, and, and others who are not on the call, who are demonstrating how a strong team can be dynamic even during COVID to accomplish so much, and thank you for doing that. This is indeed a good report, one that we, I haven't received in a while, and that's. And that's just a testament to following, bringing in the right people, working together. We're accomplishing our goals and thank you for making that happen. I'm glad Marcia asked about Schlegel, thank you for doing that. And also, I'm really glad that you brought up the encumbered phase category. I think that's really helpful in terms of us trying to follow along and categorize, you know, how things are being allocated. But you also mentioned the project tracker. And so I wonder if and when you think that might be ready and, and how, you know, we could receive updates to that. I think that would be really significant so that we could kind of follow along as the progress is being made, if that's what it's intended for.
No, I think, and Stan and Jamar, please feel free to interrupt, but, you know, when Stan came in, the sort of the, the origin behind the tracker was now that there's someone who is managing all seventy-two projects, that we have a real dynamic way of showing where each of them are. And as, as with all good things, once we get into it, we want to add a little more, we want to add a little more, we're adding a little more. Right now, we're in a phase where we're cleaning up some of the project codes. So right now, you'll note that I've reported on categories of expenditures based on their general ledger code, you know, contracted services and vehicles and building services. We want to drill down a little bit more specifically to get to a place where we have a status of project, which we do have project by project, but where we can report out the spending on each project. And so I think once we get to that level, because I think that is what will be most meaningful to you all, I think we do want to share some portion of this in a way with council so that you all understand exactly where everything is. So it's in progress, the goal is for it to be shared. We just need to spend a little more time refining things first.
And if I could just add one last thing to the Schlegel list or conversation, rather, is Schlegel is in a list of projects that are in a specification phase that was alluded to in the early part. So it's not yet in the invoicing stage, but it, it's, it's on the radar. And we will add it to the top sixteen list.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Questions? All right, Meredith, Stan, Jamar, thank you for the report. And we'll look forward to some future updates. And again, congratulations on the progress, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Yeah, Linda, did you say something?
I was able to get the stream started. I had to do a little bit of overriding and bypassing, but I got it started.
Thank you, Linda.
Great. All right, I'm going to turn over the charter amendments regarding the residency ordinance review to Donna and Elizabeth and Linda to give us an update on, I believe there was four that were sent out?
There were, there were four. Really, we're only dealing with two possibilities, either eliminating the residency requirement altogether or, as we discussed last week, a situation where the city's council can consider certain criteria and determine on a case-by-case basis whether they're willing to waive the residency requirement.
And I think if, if you've all read this, I think what Elizabeth has, has put out here is, is certainly worth conversation. It gives council some leeway in terms of our hiring process and, in, well, not hiring per se, but in terms of what we expect of people who are brought on board. And it does give some subjectivity to council moving forward.
I just want to add that, you know, as justification for these proposed changes, I did cite the difficulty that the city has had in the past in hiring and recruiting those in more senior positions. I also cited the fact that the Act forty-seven Recovery Plan, the latest version, it was recommended to the city that we consider changing the residency requirement for the benefit of the city and taxpayers. They also cited that the difficulty of, for the city having and in filling these vacancies has led to less capacity in our critical areas and diminished our effectiveness just overall as a city. So those are the justifications for the potential changes to these, to these sections of the Home Rule Charter. We would be amending two separate sections, Section seven oh five, which pertains to department heads, offices, heads of departments, offices and agencies, and then Section four oh one A, which pertains to the Managing Director.
How does everybody feel about what they, they've read of this? In terms of how Elizabeth, I think, has done a good job on this. Linda, how does everybody feel about this on council?
I'm, this is Jeff, I'm in the all-in camp, all-in or all-out, that's all.
Which one?
Anyone else?
We need to be careful.
Go ahead, Strat.
We need to be careful if we open, just open it up for everybody. I don't want to lose our people in the city out of some very important jobs. And that's what I'm afraid is going to happen. I think there should be some restrictions for some of the positions that we're going to be hiring people on.
Okay.
Can I ask you to clarify, what do you mean by the people in the city to lose? Can you clarify your statement just a little bit for me? I'm confused.
Well, suppose, suppose we don't get somebody immediately. Does that mean we're going to have to run out and open it up to the general public? I'm in favor, and I've always been in favor, whether it's police, firemen or anything else. We work for the city. I like to see the people in the city get the positions that are open, if possible. That includes everything.
Yeah, that makes good sense. But again, I go back, I go back to the all-in or all-out position that I take because this is my concern. I think Strat makes a good point, that issue is always going to be there. And if it's a political decision or, and I don't want to call it a political decision, if it's a legislative decision to waive or not waive some of these things, it just changes, it's an intangible that we'll always have to deal with. Because you always have that underlying current, the people that want it to be one way and wanted others that want it to be another way.
So.
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 What was that?
Somebody said handsome, I think.
I think, I think that was a junior counselor somewhere. Not on my side, he's not here right now.
Let me finish that comment. So, you know, it, it's, it's just that, to me, I'm, I'm, when we cross this threshold of we waive this thing altogether or we have this in-between, the in-between will always be a wavering thing. I just want to point that out. It will be, you know, most of the time it'll probably work out well. But depending on the politics, the status of the body, the relationships with the mayors, whatever it may be, we'll just have this kind of floating device. May that be enough to help people or is it enough to still scare people away? I don't know. That's, that's my own decision. Now, Lucine, did I cut you off?
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, for me, it is important to clarify that if we would remove the requirement, it does not eliminate the ability of any resident living in the city of Reading to apply for a job. That resonates to me. So that, you know, I, I also agree with Jeff's concern around having it be, what did you say, like a legislative decision, right? You know, with, with parameters around it. And, and so I'm in favor of, and thank you, Elizabeth, it was very well presented, you know, to consider more so a, an incentive or a bonus. So that it's not an arbitrary process of a decision or twenty miles versus a ten-mile radius or, you know, residency for the term of the duration in which you hold the position or, you know. So either you're a resident or you're not is, is not arbitrary, right? The best candidate is hired and everyone has the ability to apply. And then there would be an incentive or bonus which can be determined that really rewards or encourages someone to fully invest themselves into the community, whether that be, you know, some of what was proposed with blighted property, some, what it currently exists that Jamar had brought up last time, which is, I think it's five-thousand-dollar bonus. You know.
Giving expenses, yes.
Yeah, that type of thing, I'm in favor of because I think it really kind of reaches all aspects of the discussion, which, you know, if we want to move forward in our exit strategy and if this has been identified not only in our exit plan, but also in the ability of those who are going through the hiring process and our administrative team being, identifying that, that this is a barrier. I think that's things that we should consider.
I think too, the, the question of residency, the actual definition of it is something that has plagued us so many, so many years, so many years. And I hope that at some point that goes away, but I think those who have been here a long time, we've seen so many creative ways in which residency has been established. And that's, that's just something we may have to deal with. But that has been, that has been an issue, at least in the, the several, the couple decades I've been on council.
Yeah, and real, real quickly, you know, contract negotiations with new employees, you know, there's all kinds of incentives, whether it's the parachutes or whatever that can be negotiated. From, from this charter amendment standpoint, we either going to offer, we're either going to eliminate the residency requirement or we're going to offer what, this council approval? Right?
Right, and then, and then if, you know, depending on the outcome and, and which, which one we choose to put forward, we can do in the future a supplemental incentive program.
Yeah, but that's, that's just part of our normal human, our human resources offerings now. I know we do that now. So the, the question here is, do we require somebody to live in the city or not? And if we, if we do A, that clears it up, yes or no? Or B, we, we may or may not require it depending on council's feeling at the time. Right? And that's what we're offering?
That's right.
Yeah, so we need to decide, we don't need to do it tonight. Do we want to have no, no residency requirement at all? And that doesn't mean you couldn't still offer incentives in your negotiations to try to get somebody to move here or whatever. Or B, does it, does it, do we want it to require a council approval moving forward?
So Jeff, you don't want any of these parameters spelled out then that have been included? You just want to clear-
I, I, we live in, you know, we have enough trouble with the charter as it is with it and at and that and this and that. You know what I mean? We, I've lived this long enough to know that either we do things one way, we either really clear about it or it's cloudy, especially with the politics and the council-mayor relationships and, you know, it just doesn't paint a green light for anybody. And that's just my preference. That doesn't mean I, my view's the only view, I'm just giving you my view. I, I just, I've lived it enough to know that if we do that, it, it will solve some problems, but it will probably cause others.
Inevitably, yeah.
Yeah, that's my concern, that's all. So we don't have to solve that tonight, I just want to be clear that we have those two choices and everyone should take some time to think it through. And when do you need somewhat of a, when do you want to vote on something, in a couple of weeks?
Linda, what was the timeline?
We had hoped to introduce it on the twenty-second and have a vote at the first meeting in July. At the, we would need to adopt it by the last meeting in July.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we have to, if we want to get it on the ballot, we have to have that ready by early August, correct, Linda?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, that's pretty quick, wow, I didn't realize it was going to-
We can, we can make it work, we, we dilly-dally too many times.
Between now and-
Was there any thought of putting both of them on the ballot? I guess that, you couldn't do that, right?
No. That wouldn't work out so well.
I don't think so.
It wouldn't work. All right, so early in July, we have to decide, we can put them both on the table and see which one passes and it gives people time to figure that out, right?
So we would introduce it on Monday and then make a choice as far as which one we vote on in another two weeks from the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay. Good.
And I'm sort of looking at, there's a lot of if, ands or buts. I think it's good work that's been done by Elizabeth and Linda and Donna. But, you know, as far as where my preference lies, I know no matter what route we go down, there's always going to be pushback. I think we need to have this cleared up, that the residency barriers that have impinged our government need to be addressed. So what's the best route to do that?
Well, if you go over some of the people that are supposed to be living in the city, in one case, what'd we do, just change the title? So he didn't have to move in. You remember that one, Marcia?
Well, we have done, there have been a lot of unfortunate paths we've gone down because this has never been cleared up. And I, that's what I want to, that this is real clear, that we don't get into all this, what's the definition of residency? We want people to be qualified employees where there's stability in the workforce.
Well, if you check the, all the information you receive from the other municipalities, the majority of them have a residence, some sort of residency.
Yeah, well, I'll say it before, I'll say it again, I said it before, I just, to me, the residency requirement, this is my own personal view of it, 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 it just speaks to weakness, you know? We want a city that people are dying to come into and that's, it's our job to get it there. I, I just don't believe that you should make people come here. I think people should want to come here. I went for a walk earlier today, I walked up and did an hundred blocks, I was forced into the cemetery. What a beautiful block, hitting, you know, hitting in the city. People should die in the city and we've got to get it there. This requirement thing is like, the only way we could get somebody to move here is to hire them. Yeah, I don't know, I just don't like it. It's limited us so much over the years, I'd rather just see it go away. And that's my, only my personal view.
I, I agree. I think it's frankly, I think it's caused more harm than good over the last years in terms of being able to keep a stable administrative team beyond the change in administration and stuff. It is a lot to expect people to pick up and, and make a huge change, especially if they live regionally, if they live within County, obviously if they're coming from New York or somewhere else, then that's, it's, you know, obviously going to relocate at that point. But I, I just think it's caused more harm than good and I agree with Marcia on that, on that point. Been through a lot of sort of trauma over the years and that one particular case Strat cited was extremely uncomfortable and you and I, Marcia, never felt good about that one.
Well, I think we both voted the same way on that one.
Let's put it this way, we all live in Reading, council, right?
I hope.
And no one's forced us to live here, we live here because this is where we want to live, right? So I don't live here because my job required me to live here. So.
Our population is growing and we're getting more and more people. And I know we have able people that can handle these positions, but they, they must be available to them.
And, and they are. Every, when we put out, you know, help one or however we phrase that, we, we, everywhere from local to cast our net, close and far, correct, Pedro?
And, and moving forward, you know, any administration can take into account somebody that lives in the city. They can weigh that in in their decision-making process. Nobody, it doesn't mean there still isn't value that you live in the city and applying for one of these jobs. That would be, I, I think that would be looked highly upon, you know, for a qualified applicant, so. We have time to think it through, Strat, we're not going to solve it tonight, we're just walking through it. So it's going to be introduced on the twenty-second, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
These two will be introduced, we will vote on one or both on the following meeting early July. Everyone is aware of the timeline, so I would, I would ponder them in the meantime. And if you have additional questions, you know, address them through Elizabeth, Linda or Donna. All right, are we good for now on this? All right.
Good to go, good.
All right. Um, all right, we're going to move on to the municipal trash discussion. It's six fifteen, we need at least an hour for this. The, the update to fifth and tenth properties project is not going to be discussed this week. That will be next week per the administration's request. So let's get into this issue. So let's get into this issue, there have been a number of questions forwarded to the administration. There's been a ton of information sent out. I mentioned to some of you, I talked to the mayor and Pedro about. Our timeline feeling a little aggressive, we may need another week or two to not only discuss this and ponder the RFP. But also to educate the public, one way or the other. Why we're thinking a certain way, and this evening's meeting is aimed at giving Kevin and Pedro and the administration an opportunity to present. You know, a lot of the reasoning behind why they want to move this forward. We will also be able to discuss a lot of the pushback that we've had, I know the administration. In the past week or two has really tried to incorporate that. A lot of those concerns into the consideration of a new RFP. I had mentioned to the, you know, to Pedro and the mayor that the existing program isn't perfect either. It needs to be improved, they've agreed with that as well. So I guess I'll turn it over to Pedro first and then turn it over to Kevin from there.
Jeff, before we get started, I just wanted to be able to make a point because. If this is being presented to us as council in what will be a streamed meeting. However, I believe there's so much important information from what I reviewed that was sent to us. That the public needs to have many ways to access this because there are some of the public that may not be comfortable. Or even be able to navigate how. So I'm just asking the administration to make sure that this whole packet of information is available in whatever way we can. Make as many links through the media, just so people can have a chance to do it. This shouldn't be the only time it's presented, and I know that's not your intent. But I just want to emphasize that because I have questions from folks. And it's not possible at this time for me to meet with them the way that I'd like to, to review the documents.
Well, Marcia, before Pedro responds, that was part of my comment with, and he'll tell you with Pedro and the mayor. The necessary time tonight will not be the only time we have to educate the public. We want to have what we feel sufficient time to at least get the reasoning, the understanding, the value of doing whatever we do. So people really understand what decisions are being made and why they're being made. There are one or two points we'll get into this evening that stand out to me. And I think the administration is prepared to speak to them this evening. So I've heard that from a few of you, I've expressed that to the administration and they, they fully understand. So I turn it over to Pedro.
Jeff, if I may intercede here?
You may briefly, Strad, go ahead.
You know, I've been on council now many years and I've been involved with many projects. But this project right now is the biggest one that I've seen. That our residents are getting involved with, especially on, in my district. They are furious. I have the names of people last week up until Sunday. Twenty-three people that have contacted me up here personally, besides groups. Objecting to the way this is being handled. This trash. I mean, we're blaming, we're blaming people for this and blaming people for that. We need to blame people that are responsible for a dirty city. Okay?
Yeah, well, that's right, I mean, I don't want to be blaming anybody. What we're trying to do as a body, and I made it clear with the administration, is making honest and fair decisions based on the facts. If there's a problem in the city and very well may be, based on some of the things I have read. Regarding trash collection, it's our job to solve it for the city. I get there's a lot of residents who are happy with their haulers and a lot of residents who aren't happy with the city service, and a lot who are. As a body, we've got to look at the problem that the administration is going to frame for us tonight and make a decision of what's been, what's in the best interest. For the entire city, I've got neighbors and friends calling me and yelling too. But, you know, at the end of the day, I have to tell them that we have to be able to instill a service that keeps our city as clean as possible. And sometimes that involves pain and we're going to listen to the administration tonight and move forward from there. We're not making a decision tonight, we're not rushing to judgment, we're going to get qualified information.
Well, just up in my district, Jeff, I'm telling you now, the people up here are furious. They are.
I'm sure some are, there are some people who have had private haulers for a long time. We are not being ununderstanding of that, we fully understand that. At the same time, we are faced with trying to keep the city clean. So let's turn it over to Pedro and Kevin, tonight is the first day or night to get some questions answered. We'll have opportunities to further digest the information and, as Marcia stated, share it with the public. So let me turn it over to Pedro and we'll go from there.
Thank you, council president, and thank you, members of council. You know, I would note, no doubt that this is a difficult issue. And let me start off by saying that the administration of Mayor Moran, we're not masochists. We're not about picking fights that are unnecessary, it's simply because, you know, we just don't have anything better to do. We are an administration that has stated its values and has acted on them. To make sure that we promote a city that, as the last discussion included. Is a city where every, not just the ones that are here now, but everyone wants to come here to Redding to make a home. To live, to learn, to work, and to play. And to be able to do that, you have to make difficult decisions. And, and we are, as an administration, committed to be diligent in doing whatever we believe is needed with everyone's input. To make those difficult decisions, it's easy to govern when things go well, if we didn't have COVID, but we had COVID. It is easy to, to govern when you just don't look at the issues that are difficult and simply just go along with what is popular. But that's not who we are. And again, I just want to, I appreciate the opportunity to give you more background. And some of this information may have been discussed. But I do appreciate that it's a, it's a complex issue and it requires further, so that's what we'll do today. But the bottom line here is, and I appreciate the consideration of this solid waste ordinance. That was introduced at the regular meeting on June 8th, requiring residential properties with four residential units or less to participate. In the municipal trash and recycling collection services, which is already 80% of the city. A couple of things to state before I turn it over to Kevin and the consultants from MSW. It is well documented that the city of Redding has a problem with trash. And we can do a lot of good in terms of infrastructure, making our city beautiful in many different ways. And if we don't address this issue, not only is it going to be a problem, but also is, is costly. At the moment, and the information that I, that I'm sharing with you is not made up by the city. It's documented by Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful, which commissioned a study on littering and illegal dumping in Pennsylvania. A study of nine municipalities. And he rates Redding as one of the ones with the hardest issues with $2 million expenditures every year. And 89% of that going towards abatement, which is cleaning after the fact. So we have a problem, it's documented, and when the city participated in this study, which was issued earlier this year. It was not the word of the administration of the city. This study included participation from reputable organizations like Barrio Alegria, Penn State Berks, Redding Beautification. Redding Downtown Improvement District, Redding Housing Authority, Redding Public Library, and the South Penn Task Force. So that's, so that's, that's the genesis, that is just documented, we can try to debate it, but it's fact. Beyond that, just to be clear, no one here is blaming anyone. What we are saying is, and by the way, Kevin will go further into discussing how we got to this point. The MSW consultants will speak to it as well. We are, we first, we're not blaming anyone, and we appreciate the concerns that have been expressed by the, we have a, a couple hundred of individuals. That have expressed their very serious concern in a very heartfelt way, and we are documenting all that. To Councilwoman Goodman Hendershitz, the first step is already on our website where we have included the Q and A of all the questions that we have received thus far. And it is on the website, it's under the trending section, and we'll make sure that it's easy to find. But I want to acknowledge that, you know, Kevin Lugo, the Solid Waste and Sustainability Manager. Has been responsive and that we're not shying away, every phone call is being answered, everyone is being heard, even if people may disagree. We are a city of 89,000 people, so keep that in mind as you do the numbers and consider hundreds, we're talking about, you know, close to 90,000. The second is, no first, so there's no blame on anyone. There is not suggesting that we have, we're talking to the folks that are commenting are bad people to the contrary. Caring citizens, caring residents. But what we're saying, and by the way, and we're not saying that this solid waste collection ordinance that would put everyone on the municipal collection system. Is the answer to all, it's not a silver bullet, it's not a panacea, it's one element in a continuum. Of improvement to beautify our city and make it more attractive. So this is just one element, many other elements also documented in the study about Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful that talk about. Our biggest problem is illegal dumping by, by commercial construction companies, that we have to do. There's also have been a history more recent in the city of no quality of life enforcement. That is changing, that's not the case anymore, we can talk about the steps we're taking there. So to be very clear, nobody's being blamed. Second, we recognize this is a complex issue. Third, it would be easy just to ignore it and pretend that it's not there, but it's there. And, and again, this particular element is one in many, and it's not going to cure everything. It would require a multiple steps and collaboration from everyone. So the goal is to have a hearty conversation that in the end, based on the expert, not me, but the experts. Believe this is a step in the right direction, and by the way, we would be doing something that is already the norm and the practice in most of Pennsylvania and the United States. In fact, we are in the minority. And we're very sensitive to businesses and we don't, that's not the, the point is, the point is to lean into account is the broader picture. So I, I, so we, I provided lots of information to council members. I will make sure that all that information is on the website so others can read it as well. And the administration appreciates the opportunity to engage in a difficult conversation that I understand has been going around for 20 some years. And again, it would be very easy to ignore it, but that would have been irresponsible. And that's not what the administration of Mayor Eddie Moran is about. It's easy, again, to govern when it's easy, we're showing character, again, while having compassion. And by the way, as I stop here, Kevin will discuss with you that the concerns that have been expressed about our, from our senior citizens. Persons with disabilities, there's ways to address all of that, even access, and we are willing to do it. So we are willing to be as accommodating and helpful to as many people as possible. So with that, and with your kind respect, I turn it over to Kevin Lugo. The city's Solid Waste and Sustainability Manager that can give you more details. And we wanted to also invite our, the consultants from MSW, from whom this ordinance, you know, was born. So that they can also speak from their perspective as a leading expert in the industry to try to address the concerns and the issues that we face today in the city of Redding. So with that, Kevin?
Thanks Pedro, and thank you, council. So real quickly, just to introduce our consultants, we have Steve DC and John Colbertson, both from MSW Consultants. They were chosen through an RFP process last year, as the lowest bidder and overall best value to the city. MSW Consultants has been operating for over 20 years and the combined staff experience is over 100 years in waste consulting. And that includes local work here, they work for Philly, they've worked for Lancaster, Allentown, Berks County Solid Waste Authority. As well as the DEP, so they're very experienced both nationally and here locally. The mayor's proposal, transitioning to citywide trash collection, is best practices in other cities. And MSW consultants have advised us that there are many benefits to be gained here in Redding. One of them is accountability, right? As Pedro said, this is one important strategy in cleaning up the city. Right now, our current system lacks accountability. We can increase that, we can also increase the competition and we can get a better price for our ratepayers on this service. Now, if you look at like Lancaster, for example, a Lancaster transferred to a citywide service a little bit over a decade ago. And they've seen massive improvements in their city. Steve just mentioned to me earlier tonight that every year since they've done that, they've seen a improvement in their litter index, which is measuring how much litter is in their community. So over time, they've really seen a major improvement from this. Right now, with our system, we have loopholes. So if you're not on the city's service, if you choose to opt out of the city's service and get a private hauler. It's very, very difficult for the city to track that and make sure everyone has a hauler. Haulers are required to report regularly, both biannually and update the city every month. That is not happening consistently. And so we have over 15 haulers operating in our city. They're not all reporting as they're supposed to be, it's very hard for the city to make sure that everyone has a hauler. So like Pedro said, we are not blaming people with private haulers, saying that they're the source of litter or dumping in our city. But it's hard, it's very difficult for the city to track and hold people accountable. When we have this mishmash reporting going on and lots of opportunities for people to dump their trash on their neighbors, on our public properties, et cetera. As Pedro said, we recognize there are concerns, I personally have spoken to several dozen people about this. And the concerns are largely the same, right? We, we hear from our seniors, people who have challenges maybe accessing the front of their house with their trash. And we can include that in RFP, we can include rear alley collection. We are looking at accommodations for people with disabilities. I believe that all of the challenges we're hearing, we can address many of them with a city service. And just to remind everyone, we had a couple hundred residents call in, I talked to many of them myself. But we currently have 21,000 households on the city's service. That's 80% of the households that are eligible. So this is only a fraction of a small portion of the city that's using a private hauler that are calling in right now. So I would like to ask Steve, MSW consultants provided us with a handful of technical memos. Which we shared with council outlining why this is important. How it can improve clean city efforts and how it can save our ratepayers some money. Steve, would you mention just a little bit about why you think this is important for our community or any community to have citywide collection?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing I want to say is I want to comment about Pedro's comments, I thought they were. It's very important to recognize how complex this issue is. So I appreciate that, it is very dynamic, there's some political components to it. So, and I've seen that in any city scale transition where you're trying to make a major change to trash. So I just wanted to comment on that. Kevin, what do you want me to focus on as I start this? Like, what do you want to hear specifically?
About the ways in which moving to a citywide trash collection is going to benefit us in terms of clean city and closing some of those loopholes. And then if you can speak a little bit to the RFP component of having. The risk that proposers face and the impact on our prices.
Okay, so. If we listen to one of the primary concerns for folks that might not be in the contract now. That one of the big concerns is level of service that they get for their, from their current hauler. So what we tried to do in the current specification was look at elevating the level of service by providing. In the combination of services that are done by the city now, tire collection, electronics, yard waste at the curbside. We tried to take a look at the level of service in the prior contracted specs and kind of elevate those a little bit. For example, I know there's some concerns, there were some concerns about alley collection. People that might not be able to just go out to the front and put it at the curbside. So we have put provisions in there to make sure that we can access and do alley collection by using a smaller type trash truck. It seems like a little thing, but those types of things really go long, go a long way in improving the level of service. So. Incorporating, including, and I think you did this last time, having bulky item collection at the curbside. So, so really what we're trying to do is about anything that you're going to generate at the household level each week. Every customer that's under contract service is going to have curbside collection for about every material that they can generate. The city's going to come by and provide additional special collections. And this transitions the city, particularly when you go to having all eligible units in the system. Where you go from a cleanup after the fact type strategy to a prevention type strategy. And when we do that, and we've implemented that particularly at the city scale where. You know, the urban environment seems to contribute more to illegal dumping and you've got lots of small contractors. When you start doing that and provide a high level of service for all of the customers, what we see over time. And like Pedro said, it's not a silver bullet. You see meaningful impacts of how curbs, a high level of curbside service for all the materials that I can generate at an affordable price. generate at an affordable price, nobody has the incentive to go do things outside of the system. So I don't have a lot of incentive to cheat the system and put trash at my neighbor's site or in a household when I'm already paying an affordable price for a high level of service.
And if I can jump in here Steve, that is, that is a major problem with our current system is that people have an incentive to get off the city service and then place their trash elsewhere. That is, that is one of the biggest challenges we face right now because even though people are required to have a property, a private hauler on their property, they don't have the city service, there's kind of a game going on right now where people can get away with not having a private service because we have, like I said, 15 different haulers. We require reporting so that we can keep track of all those properties, not because we want to know who the haulers are serving, but we want to make sure that everybody has adequate trash service. We have not gotten the level of reporting that we were looking for. And so we cannot say at any given time that every single property has trash service because we're not getting that information from haulers.
Yeah Kevin, I, and I don't interrupt you guys, but I just want to underline that point with council. I had this discussion with Pedro earlier today, but as you guys continue to push this matter, we need to dive deeper into that because these lists have been going on for a long time. And what the city doesn't have time to do is play the game of find the list and then this other game Kevin that you're pointing out, you know, off the hauler, on the service, off the service, on the hauler, no hauler, cluttering my neighbor's pile, you know, we need to talk more about this. To me, to me as an operational guy, this is the number one issue. I certainly care about cost savings, I care about improved service, but I think we need to understand that as we go forward. And I just wanted to underline that for city council because there has to be a problem that we're trying to solve and I'm hearing that's the problem.
Yeah, let me quantify that. I can, I can quantify that so, a little bit. So just, we'll use, we'll use Lancaster as one perspective. So when the, the city of Lancaster had 17 haulers prior to their transition. So once they got the units under contract, they learned that over 30% of their occupied units did not subscribe for trash. Now, in your case, you have an opt out that's six or 7,000 units, but I don't think it's a stretch that you probably are aligned with industry standards where 20 to 40% of those units are, have a kind of a financial incentive to not get a trash hauler. So what are they doing with their garbage? I mean, they're, they're putting it in your recycling bin, they're putting it at the curbside over the fence, you know, they're, they're not doing the proper thing. And the problem with that, which we did a subsidies analysis, is there's a cost that's borne by those that are in the contract to pay for that illegal dump in litter problem that you guys are targeting from the back end instead of the, the front end of the, of the issue. So it, it does become really expensive to approach it that way.
And right now, this is again, this is estimating because we cannot possibly keep track of all of those properties that are changing haulers if we're not getting all the reporting in. But right now, based off of our February reporting, there are on the order of about 1,300 residential properties in the city that could have trash service, but I have no report saying that they do. We also have an issue where the haulers report, report both trash for commercial and residential properties. So just because a property has been reported doesn't mean those residences above it are being served, it may just be for the business on the bottom floor. This is the kind of problem that we have consistently.
If I, if I may, because I know that time is, is limited and I so much appreciate what, what Steve and Kevin you're sharing, if I could, because I believe we have to open it to the floor for council members, there's a lot of questions. If we can talk about again, and I want to be extra clear for everybody, particularly our caring neighbors that have expressed their concerns, by, just by what you have told me, you're law abiding, we appreciate what you're doing, so we're not talking about you. We're still talking, there's a lot of other thousands of people that are outside the scope of, so we want to make it clear. Second, understanding that maybe our, some of our, you know, more city or community might not be putting out every other week a refrigerator or an appliance. This is where we could work through the RFP or through policy, some discounts for seniors. And in terms of mobility, we talked already about that. If we can take just a little bit of time, because this was important as, when you presented Kevin to the mayor, myself and others, you know, the strategy for how we turn our city into, you know, this clean city and waste management is one. The fact that there are other services that are, that are, that are provided in the city, to the entire city, that are paid for by the dollars that are paid by that 80%, that is in the, in the, in the municipal trash collection system, but it goes beyond, the dollars are used for services, vital services that are outside just picking the trash on a weekly basis. Can you speak to that and then we certainly can, you know, if there's any other salient point you want to make or Steve, we do that. But let's talk about that because it's that important element about fairness. And by the way, there's an important component here about education and plenty of it. And that's why the mayor among his four pillars has education and workforce development. And if you read the, the mayor's transition report and he spoke about it, you're in the state of the city at address, what that means among other things is creating a sense of ownership, awareness among our young people about the importance of caring for your city and not littering is one. So I also want to put out there, but can we speak briefly about the benefits that the entire city derives with the money of the 80%?
Absolutely. Right now, it's largely as Pedro mentioned earlier, abatement, it's cleaning up after the fact. We have several staff members here who are cleaning up our alleyways, our public parks, our streets, our sidewalks, a variety of public properties. We're out there every single week doing that. And that is paid for through the trash fee, which is only paid for by 80% of these properties. In addition to that, what we want to do is we want to transition away from reactive abatement based approaches to proactive preventative approaches. So in this RFP, one of the things we want to do is add a suite program, our solid waste education and enforcement program, that's actively out doing education, that's giving out warnings and doing enforcement when necessary for all waste in the city. And that's something that, again, should be shared by everybody who's receiving those services, not just 80% of them. So right now, we estimate on the order of $70 a year, which is about a third of the trash fee, is going to all these abatement efforts and not everyone is participating in that, that fee right now. So Pedro, unless you have anything to add, do we want to open it up to council for some questions here?
Yeah, we will do that Kevin. Thank you Pedro and, and the consultants. Yeah, we're going to open this up to council for questions and comments and more, five as deep as we have to, but who wants to start?
Jeff, I have a question for council members rather than to the group because we were provided a lot of very detailed documents that really did a lot of specification about numbers people were looking at or looking for and such. And I just wanted to ask fellow council members whether they, with their questions, were getting them answered. Because for me, it was very enlightening to look over the documentation, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page, understanding the data that supports this decision making.
And I, if I can, I'd like to agree with Marsha in that. You know, we, we as counselors should take every decision we make in a very professional, non-emotional kind of way. Because we're being fiduciary stewards of the city, we really need to look at the bottom line, especially as we continue to exit Act 47. And I hope that we can do that because this issue for multiple cycles has been rife with politics and emotion. Now we have everything laid out clearly, surely, that makes sense when you already have a majority of, of city households that are using municipal trash. I understand and I'm not, not, certainly not taking for granted the concerns that people have that to the administration's credit and our, our consultants' credit are trying to weave those into the solution here. But please, the data has been, I feel very comprehensive, I'm, I'm very appreciative of it, appreciative of it. And please fellow counselors, do not let your emotions dictate or politics dictate which way we need to go on this. That's all I'm going to say right now. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will just add that, you know, you've got to keep, you've got to keep the politics out of this guys, we're trying to-
But it never has Jeff, let's be realistic.
No, I understand, but what I'm trying to say is we're trying to, we're trying to solve a couple of problems here.
Correct.
The biggest of which, again, I go back to is this list management. I'm hearing, you know, from Kevin that 1,300 properties, we don't know right now at this moment whether or not they have trash service. Kevin, may I ask you, how many opt outs do you see on a monthly basis on a kind of a weighted average?
Uh, that's a good question. We see, we've seen a steady increase in the overall numbers with more properties during the service every month, about 100 to 150 every year. But that does change, like you said, there's opt outs every month, so it kind of goes back and forth. Honestly, the bigger issue is moving back and forth between separate private haulers. And if that private hauler or a resident doesn't let us know, we have no idea that it's changed or that a hauler has been lost.
Yeah, so that's the same problem we had when we first talked about this list issue, I don't know, five, eight years ago, where how were we going to manage these lists? And it was actually even worse at one point. You know, there was even talk about requiring people to stay with a hauler for a year, but that even had its own issue. So, you know, to council, yeah, I think the administration provided a lot of good information. If you didn't get a chance to, to read through it, I would, I would take the time to go back to it. The biggest issue I'm hearing is, and hopefully this will stir other questions from other counselors, the better price doesn't affect me as much as this list management. Because I think what you're probably doing is we probably have five, six, maybe 800, 900 people in the city and that can grow, that we're playing cat and mouse with on a regular basis. A lot of that is ending up, as Kevin said, in other people's yards and back alleys and other places. And the 80% of the people who are on the program are paying for that cleanup. Right, there's a way to work around that, that certainly could be discussed, but does that change the list management problem? Now, you, I hear we have three haulers who comply very well. A lot of people will say, well, it's not very fair to them. And I, in some sense, I think we all agree with that. We don't want small business owners hurt and maybe there was a way you could phase them out. I'm not suggesting that's what we have to do, but I'm just saying that there are issues that, you know, certain people, certain people have been with some of these people for 20, 30 years. At the end of the day, we're never going to make the list management system work. And it sounds like we're spending a lot of time trying to make it work. And people know that it's a game and they're getting away with it. So I, I do believe that's a big concern. I think if this is one part of an overall solution, you know, to making the city cleaner, what I'm hearing from the consultants is that they've seen litter improvement consistently in communities who have a citywide service. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you measured the litter in a particular way, could you give us an overview of, of that improvement and that, that whole benchmark and how it's measured and what, what improvement levels you see in this model? I think it's important.
Well, I, I mean, I think your local neighbor and using a litter index is probably the best example of a metric. And I, I think one of the other important things to recognize is that when you have any type of opt out system, what we've seen over and over is that 20 to 40% of customers who have the option, choose no option, meaning they do not subscribe for service. And, and so that, that's an important number because in your case, let's just assume that's anywhere from 1,500 to 3,500 units that are unaccounted, meaning we're not sure what they're doing with their trash. That's a lot of trash when it ends up where it's not supposed to. And, and I think that's a, a part of the, the issue. If I can use another moment, I wanted to just kind of relay the thought process that I've seen from other large municipal governments. Do you have time to do that?
Yeah, so before you do that, I just want to make one further point, based on everything you just said. So I, I want to remind the city council members as well, and the administration, that we have a lot of new investors coming in and out of the city on a regular basis. The city has slowed down as far as property sales, but there's still a lot of property sales in the city on an annual basis. So we still do have a very transitional city, which makes this whole trash management challenging. So I just wanted to point that out, just feeding into the, the previous discussion of this management. So I'll go back to you sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so John, is John Culbertson, are you on the call?
I am if I've been approved.
Yeah, what I, what I was going, what I wanted to mention John was about that discussion around, you know, we have a database of 4,000 cities and they kind of all, nearly all of them arrived at the same conclusion around operating a comprehensive citywide trash program. So if you could speak to that point about why they assume that role and what that means, that would be good.
I will give that a shot, just briefly. My name is John Culbertson, I'm a principal with MSW Consultants. We work with local governments, city and county level across the country, doing this optimization work. I apologize for being a, a new voice without chance to see folks, but I will try to be brief in addressing that question. One of our internal resources that, that we use to help communities such as yours make, you know, decisions about best practices, is a quite extensive benchmark database that we funded with our, essentially our internal research team. And I think the way I like to summarize it, I'll be brief and if anybody wants more information, I'll go, go more, but I don't think we need that. But I think the way we've come to look at residential solid waste management is on almost every level, it's very similar to any other utility. And having a single provider of that utility allows for the best service at the lowest price and the most control over essentially providing a good service. And I would say, we have about 1,000 counties and about 4,000 cities in our database. And I, I think I'm only aware at the moment of just a very small number of others that have not gone the exclusive route in terms of essentially providing service entirely for the residential sector. And that eliminates the, some of the, the internal subsidies that I heard Kevin and Steve reference earlier. It certainly provides the most efficiency, which translates into a, a lower price. There is a roadway impact, keeping heavy, heavy duty trucks do something like 95% of the damage on residential streets. So anything you can do to manage the number of trucks going through a street, we've seen some pavement studies on that. And then also just from kind of an air emissions and noise ordinance standpoint. And I think these are reasons why, I, I don't have a, a number that is definitive that I can tell you, but it's going to be well over 95% of the cities that are in the collection business, whether through publicly provided crews, in other words, they employ their own trucks and crews, or whether they contract out, have gone the decision of making that a single provider system to really optimize their service. And I'll stop there Stephen, thank you for your opportunity to, to speak on that.
And I just have one thing to, to add. I think one of the unique-
Yeah, we, we can't hear you any longer sir?
Can you hear? Can't hear you.
Try it again.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you Steve.
Yeah, can I continue?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to point out that, you know, you have a city scale, you know, 27,000 units potentially. You have an excellent solid waste market, which means you're in the very rare situation where a city's in close proximity to three landfills and three single stream processors. The, the, the issue that I see with your system is that if I am the non-incumbent waste hauler, so if I am not a public services, it makes it very challenging to look at the bid specification and know, so this is that risk management side. So how do I come in and know what really is going to happen in terms of what I'm going to get for a collection program when there's a number of entities that can potentially opt out of the service? And so you saw this question in the addendums in your last specification. So one of the best ways to control and make sure you have an effective- And so you saw this question in the addendums in your last specification. So one of the best ways to control and make sure you have an effective, cost-effective system is to make it very transparent to all of the bidders what service they're going to get. And so that's what we've been working on behind the scenes on the specifications. But the key part of that is going to be knowing they've got a fixed number of customers or about fixed, and that they're not potentially going to lose customers. So I think that's important.
So let, let me ask you a couple of questions, uh, because one of the issues here is, and Marcia raised it earlier, and I know other council members are concerned about timelines. Because we do need time to really get in front of the public and say, you know, here's the five bullet points you really need to understand. You just mentioned ninety-five percent of the cities across the country are in this model of service, which is a pretty significant number, right, obviously? Uh, our opt-out service makes things very unmanageable for us here in the city and for possible providers, right? I mean, there's a couple of very key, the litter improvement, there's a very key bullet point that the public needs to know about. Kevin mentioned to us a week or two ago that, you know, that the RFP timeline was around six months. I, I was a little taken back by that. I know the providers need time to respond, and we need time to finalize it. Um, realistically, could, could that be done in four or five months?
Yeah, I mean, right now, given our timeline, I'd like to have a RFP out by, no later than the end of next month, because ideally, yeah, six months is a great timeline. We put it out at the end of July. We give it about a month out there. We have four months to get the proposals in, evaluate. We're going to be bringing in probably interviews with some of these proposers, because this is such a complex, um, RFP. So we, we do need some time. But realistically, yeah, we'll do it in closer to four months.
That gives us, that, that's very helpful, Kevin, because I, you know, I mean, counsel, I think we all agree that whatever bullet points they are, five, six, seven, eight, whatever we decide, we want, we want the public to be really, truly aware of them, because I don't think the public is aware of all these things. And they need to understand if a decision's going to be made, this is why, and clearly why. So, you know, we're dealing with facts, and it's not all emotion, as others have stated. So I, I've said a lot of things here, counsel. I want to open it up for everyone else. I've just kind of kept my hands on this rather closely, in favor of value. And I want to make sure everyone has a chance to ask questions. We have the consultants on the line, who, by the way, I think would be a very valuable for an open public meeting somewhere, whether it's a Zoom meeting or, or somewhere else. Uh, please keep that in mind. Counsel, anybody? Donna, Lucine?
Johani has your hand up.
Who?
Johani.
It's Johani, Jeff.
Go ahead, Johani.
Hi, everyone. So here are some of my concerns. Um, so we state that eighty percent of our properties are on the city hauler, yet we seem to still have an abundance of trash. So a hundred percent is going to guarantee us less trash. That's number one. Two, accountability. We speak of accountability. What does that look like? How, how, how do, because I don't understand why we're not holding people accountable already. And also, when we look at where illegal dumping is taking place, is it, um, in areas where, uh, properties or residents are using city hauler already? Like, that, that's where my concern is. How do we, because the issue is illegal dumping and trash in the city. What efforts have we put in place, or what have we maximized to deal with that before going or opting to a single hauler?
Sure. So first of all, less trash. The problem is, is that there's not enough accountability, as I've mentioned before, that we don't, we don't have a way to make sure that everybody is properly disposing of their trash, because people can opt out and kind of play that cat and mouse game with private haulers. So we're not talking about necessarily getting less trash. What we're talking about is making sure that everybody is disposing of it properly. Uh, to your question of where it's happening, we have, uh, city service throughout the city, and we have private haulers interspersed throughout the city. So it's not that one region of the city right now has all private haulers and one doesn't. The entire city is mixed, which means that you might have one or two properties on the block that don't have city service, and if those properties have not gotten private hauler service, they may be dumping their trash in an alleyway. A very common thing that we see is scattering their trash. So they may only have a couple items, but they're placing out in front of their neighbors' properties, sometimes nicely in their can, sometimes not so nicely. And so we see not just illegal dumping in kind of vacant lots, but actually happening in small scales all over the city.
And I can speak to that, Kevin. I think there's a missing point that we're missing. So, so accountability. So what we've done in the, with Kevin's support, and this was partly reinforced by the ordinance revisions, is we're developing a specification that's a contractual relationship between the city um, and the, and the contracted hauler. And so we've added a lot of specifications about what that relationship looks like in terms of real-time curbside feedback, meaning the contractor will be working with Kevin and city staff to relay what's happening. So that's going to be a contractual obligation to improve transparency on what's going on with trash. And so that is a lot different than making some ordinance revisions and chasing around seven or eight or nine or, or more other haulers who are not under contract with the city. And so a contract that has liquidated damages, when the hauler is not complying with what it's um, supposed to be doing, including reporting to the city on illegal dumping and improper behaviors that are, that are, you know, curbside setouts are, are improper. There are contractual obligations and even penalties built into the contract to make sure that they're doing a great job. That is much different in terms of accountability when you try to go and use an ordinance to tell the hauler, the private hauler, hey, you're not supposed to be doing this. It's a very much different, um, type of accountability.
And I think it's important to mention, too, that as we develop our sweep program, they're going to be working directly with our contracted hauler. So if the contracted hauler sees a problem, they can report to us in real time. We can get out there and do the education or the enforcement that's necessary to get it cleaned up.
And I don't mean to keep jumping in here. One of the things I did discuss with Pedro, too, as well, and I think this gentleman's mentioned it, is improving the existing service. A, a lot of people complain that the existing hauler doing the city services leaving a lot on the street. There's a lot that can be done in the RFP to bring that up to speed. And we may even be able to coordinate city street sweeping programs to come day, the day after trash. Like currently, my trash is picked up on a Monday night after we've swept the street Monday at twelve noon. So there, there's a lot of additional coordination that could occur.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, too, that yes, I think the city trash hauler could do a better job sometimes, but it's not always just their dropping material, not picking up. One of the challenges we face that we want to, uh, address with a sweep program is making sure people are properly containing their trash. Because right now, people are putting out grocery-sized bags or their stuffing bags so full that when you lift them up, things are breaking and falling out right away. So yes, I think we can improve our service. We also need to make sure we're educating residents and pulling them accountable for properly bagging and preparing their waste for collection.
And then, not to belabor the point, but if I may, Lucine, very quickly, in terms of accountability, imagine you have one collector for the city. If there's still trash out there after the collection, you know, it's your trash that you're supposed to pick up. It doesn't become a debate of whether it's you, the main trash hauler, or somebody else. Uh, so that's another important component. So, so to those who have expressed concerns about the way things are today, uh, one of the corrections that we will make, if this was to be the case, to have the exclusive hauler, is that there will be more accountability and there's less chance of saying, that's not what I was supposed to pick up. And we will build those very clear, uh, potentially even monetary, uh, liquid damages into the contract itself, because I can hold you accountable, because you're the one and only doing it. It's not like somebody else is there. Uh, but I'll stop.
And if we have, if we have just the city's contractor, it's going to be much easier to say to them, if there's a problem, you need to show us why it's not your fault, right? It's your job to clean it up. If there's a problem, the city contractor has to say, this is why, provide evidence why it wasn't their problem.
Okay. Johani, did we address all your questions?
Um, mm, I'm just trying to understand why we haven't already done that with our existing provider. Like, I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that. Like, why are we waiting to set these items in place with our current contract? And we're waiting to have a single hauler to address some of the issues that seem, uh, attainable? Like, I, I, like, I'm trying to understand, have we maximized all of our efforts before making a decision to go into single hauler? And that's the part that I'm not hearing. You know, we have, uh, uh, a component of our budget that goes towards education. Right? So have, so have, have we been, like, where, I guess, where are the areas that we need to improve in terms of our current services? And, and have we addressed those with our current call? Because again, I, I want to emphasize, if eighty percent of our city uses the city hauler, why do we have so many issues? Right? Because I would want to see that because we have eighty percent, the city's cleaner, therefore there's a need for a hundred percent of our city to use the single hauler, because it'll just get better. But it hasn't been the case. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak to that point from my perspective on the data. Um, I, I think I hear what you're saying, and I, and I, and Kevin probably knows this hands-on better than me, but in our experience, when we've worked in multiple hauler systems, just as, you know, as consultant for the last twenty to twenty-five years, it's been nearly impossible to get good data on what's actually happening with your waste system. So, so the haulers don't give you reports. The haulers won't give you customer lists. The haulers don't tell you if they're picking up, you know, ten bulky items a week at the same location, and then, so there's a lot of behaviors that just aren't transparent. So to get a handle on that and to actually go enforce it, that means you have to put staff on the street, a lot of staff. So most cities have, you know, four to ten people that are doing curbside enforcement to try to track down what the haulers are doing. So when you're not getting good data, it's really hard to tell, is that a small business contractor that's dumping trash, or is it the resident? Is it, you know, does this resident have service this week or not, or do they have any service at all? So it's a very complex system, especially at the city scale, especially when you have multiple haulers, that just in our experience, a lot of the haulers do not give you data that allows you to even assess what's really going on. So it's hard to tackle the problem when, when it's a real gray area.
And we have been doing things already to improve our program. We worked with our hauler. Uh, there was a, a staff transition in twenty eighteen. We saw an increase in problems in the first month or two after that. We worked on it. We had a couple tough conversations, and we saw a significant improvement since then. We developed some other things we can do within our contract. We are, we're in a contract, so we have to abide by the contract, of course. But we have increased a number of ways to hold the hauler accountable, to speed up our response time as a city. We're actually looking ahead right now, as you guys are well aware. Uh, we are concerned that we may see an increase in move-outs happening in the next couple of months with COVID nineteen. We are working on a, a response now to be able to deal with those issues quicker and more fully as they come up. So we are already doing improvements, but we believe that this is a very important step in cleaning up our city.
Jeff, can I make a comment?
Well, before you do, I want to make sure, Johani-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Johani, you have all your questions answered, because I want to make sure everyone's had sufficient time.
And if anyone wants to submit questions in writing, we'll happy to address them as well and give you answers, so you're not rushed, uh, tonight. Uh, we, we're happy to do that as well.
Okay, Johani, did you hear me? Thank you, Pedro.
Yeah, I, I'll send my questions.
Okay. All right. Marcia, you had a point, and then you can address your questions.
The point was more a historic one, because I heard Johani's questions. And having experienced the whole transition from the time that we had a referendum against, uh, going to a universal system, the city did a lot of different efforts to be able to keep the city as clean and keep it as organized as possible within the constraints. Uh, including at one point, we had haulers going any day of the week that they wanted to, to any client. We set up, uh, days for trash to be collected. All of those were put in place as a way of addressing some of the concerns you put out, Johani. And I think at the end of the day, as many constraints or as many controls as you put in place, it's very difficult to track a problem when you have multiple haulers there. And I want to share with you my experience of having a neighbor who has not had a hauler, who's done a lot of the things these gentlemen have shared, putting their trash next to mine, so they don't need to pay to have it picked up. Leaving it sit in the backyard for months on end, being fined by the city, ignoring the fines, to the point that I keep an immaculate backyard, but it gets really impinged, both to me and my neighbor and other property down, because this gentleman refuses to do what he needs to do. Multiply that ten or a hundredfold against, across the city, that's the answer to the question about why we have a problem. It has nothing to do with the deficits necessarily of our municipal hauler, as much as it has to do with the fact that we don't have a organized system, that we can ensure that everything is being tracked the way it is. And as we have a lot of transitions within the city, people moving in and out, people do not get haulers when they need to. If you know, and you've lived in, people that have lived in large municipalities, I know when I moved into the city of Reading, I was just astounded by the fact that I wasn't going to have municipal, uh, hauling, that I needed to actually select who was going to pick my trash up. And I had to consult with neighbors, because that was within my, not within my comfort range. Now we are going to know, once we do this contract. My questions, and I think the administration has answered them, and a lot of my constituents are asking me, like, I'm a senior. How am I going to afford this? I can't do curbside picking. I can't get my trash out. I think the administration is attempting to answer those questions. And the more questions we ask, the better prepared we're going to be to be able to vote on this and make, like Donna had said, informed decisions. Enough of my little speeches. You can tell where my passion is.
All right. Who's next with a question?
Lucine, I think, had a question.
Hi, Lucy. Yep.
Hi. I, I have had some prior dialogue with city administration on this and Kevin, and, and a lot of dialogue, um, and engagement with constituents. And I'm very happy to hear that the elevation of the level of service is being addressed, because that predominantly seems to be what is coming, um, and what I'm hearing. Um, you know, what I, what I believe is, we're talking about contracts, you know, I've participated in some of the preventative and educative outreach programs that Kevin has, has provided to the community. And I think that there has been some strong benefit and influence, even in, in areas like the south of Penn, when we talk about organizations like South of Penn and Badi O'Allegria, who are making an impact on, on encouraging the stewardship of our citizens. And I think that's really where this conversation needs to go, because as much as we talk about the RFP, and as much as we talk about the contracts and haulers themselves, I believe what the mayor is presenting and following his pillars is really a comprehensive uh, solution to our trash problem. And I don't know that any of our citizens would disagree with the fact that we have a major issue with our trash. Um, you know, the, the buy-in is important. And so all we're hearing back from at this point are the people who are concerned about a single hauler. We have not opened up or presented the opportunities for the rest of our city to learn and to provide their feedback on how to mitigate the comprehensive, uh, plan here, right? And, and how to address the trash issues. And so I think what I've enjoyed is, is going through the documentation that has been provided to us, and also going through the Q and A, and having all of those answers, um, and questions documented and provided to us. But I believe we need to take a couple more steps. And I think Jeff alluded to it a little bit earlier. We need to make sure that we are doing outreach to our community, whether it's through town halls, phone calls, Zoom meetings, um, to really present that information that's been presented to us as counsel. Um, you know, to be able to inform them of, of why this decision-making has to occur and why potentially we want to follow best practice for our city to remedy this problem of trash. So I'm going to encourage that, and I'm, I'm hoping that we have enough time to be able to do that, whether it's by council, by district. Um, even having, like, something Marcia has suggested, uh, an evolution of our trash story. You know, we have a very transient community. Uh, you know, we don't know, and I have not experienced this issue in my time in council- in my time in council or as my time as a resident in the city of Reading. So I think that in, you know, producing that in addition to some of the data we've received, some of the answers, how do we elevate the service? How do we hold people accountable? How do we encourage stewardship of our city? That provides a picture of why we need to move forward with the decision-making that's been proposed by the mayor. And, and so that really, not necessarily a question. That's more of, I believe, the direction we need to take. And maybe even encouraging the mayor to consider a task force to bring in engaged haulers and citizens and private resident and, and business owners to give that feedback and input on how do we buy in as a city to get to that level of clean city that we really need? Because we do have a trash problem. Those are my comments.
I want to briefly, Lucine, before we call on the next person, you didn't have any specific question. You, you've got enough questions answered is what I'm hearing, right? And, and I'm going to reiterate what Lucine just said. It is our goal, especially after discussing this with Kevin, we have a few weeks. And to me, if I'm, if I'm a resident, to me, if we give them the six or seven bullet points, this is the problem, this is how we fix it. And by the way, here's the added improvements we're going to strive for. Will really help people. I agree with that. I, I think if we overwhelm them with too much information, people won't hear that. To me, when I hear there's thirteen hundred and there's people, it's an evolving number, we can't find this. You know, people need to understand that causes a lot of problems for the city. And I, I think we just need to frame that and then some of the other points at the consult. We could collectively come up with a good ten bullet points and then figure out the methods on how to communicate it. Communicate it to everybody and make the decision. As far as a task force for overall litter problems, that's always a good idea. I sent everyone, everybody my white paper from a few years ago. No, I sent it to Pedro. It was a diatribe of nothing. I think that was in there about litter because it's just, it's an important issue. It is not one solution solves all. And I think Pedro alluded to that earlier. This is not meant to be this one item, the fantasy of fixing all the trash problems. There are so many other issues, so. So I agree with Lucine, as I stated earlier, communication to the public is critical. They need to be informed. I think once the public understands the problems and understands the solutions and how we can better improve the cleanliness of our city regardless of the pain. Because there's pain involved for a lot of people. There's a lot of relationships that people have. But at the end of the day, as a city council body, we've got to work with the administration to improve our city. And sometimes what doesn't work for one individual or several individuals isn't necessarily the best result for the city. We have to get to a place where we're not taking trash up in the alleys all the time or in the neighbor's yards. All right, next for questions, who is next?
Jeff? If I can, to Lucine's point, I can remember going through this the first time when I was still at the paper and I was answering calls on the city desk phone, when this started coming up in the, in the late nineties. It's a different time and it's a different tone now. Number one, there's fewer and fewer private haulers than there had been then. As, as what happens with small business, many people have merged or been bought up, things like that. When you look at the city and you look at the evolution of this, I would say from, say nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine till now, the fact that we do have eighty percent of the city already working or being under contract with what is recognized as more than municipal trash hauler, I think that speaks to the evolution of, of how people have seen the value in it and have seen that it works. You know, people, the, the city has changed dramatically since nineteen ninety-eight. Different homeowners, different folks here. But you're seeing more and more that people have seen that this is, you know, the way to go. I think when you see our neighboring cities, we're sort of an aberration from our neighboring cities, from our, our neighboring municipalities that we aren't doing this. Of course, communication is important. And I, as I'm sure fellow counselors have, I've talked to many people over the course of the last couple of weeks, had many one-on-one conversations. There's certainly a passion and wanting to keep your relationship with your, with any business person you interact with. There's a loyalty, a brand loyalty, a loyalty to small business, which is certainly admirable. But I guess the reality is that, you know, what is for the common good, what is for the greater good? And if we choose not to go forward in this, and it's entirely possible, then I think we as a council have to accept the fact that Kevin and his department are going to need a lot more personnel. Because the city, if we continue to do things the way we've done them always, we're not going to change. We're going to have continuous issues. I know when I first moved into the city in nineteen eighty-six, when I bought my house, I used to take my trash out home to my dad because he was paying Muleburg trash and I gave, gave him X amount of money. And every Sunday I hold my trash out to Muleburg responsibly, put it there. I've seen both sides of it, from, from paying for my own and doing it the right way and also being able to do it another way. But the reality is it doesn't make sense anymore. I, I look along, in my district, Marsha has it up on the hillside over there. I looked at West Spring Street. I look at River Road. It is nothing but a dumping ground. And it's a shame. We talk about utilizing our river. We'll never use it if people think of it as a dumping ground. There's so many things involved here, but, and I'm going off on tangents, but the bottom line is this, more and more people are using it. We're at eighty percent now. And again, I will be insistent on, on when it comes time for physician ordinances and other things, if we do not go with this, if we choose not to go with municipal trash, I will be insistent on asking that there are far more people that are committed to working, that we have working codes that are helping Kevin and his, in his entities there. Because if you want business to come back here, and we're already at a disadvantage because of COVID and everything else, if we want people to come back here, business to come back here, we better darn well have a clean city. Not have weeds downtown, not have trash on the riverside, the mountainsides. And we're going to need more people to help because if our, if our residents aren't going to buy into this and they're not going to change their ways, then we're going to have to be the moms and dads and employ people to pick these things up. It's the only way the city's going to change.
All right, thank you, thank you. Yes, Strat, you'll be next. But I just want to remind everyone, we have the consultants on with Kevin here as well. So if there are any remaining questions you feel you need to ask, this would be the time. Strat, you're next, sir. Go ahead.
Just a comment. I could repeat everything everybody on council and the rest of the people up there brought up. I think specifically we should take, we should slow down a little and get our people that live in the city to come in with what they consider problems and let's discuss and see if we can help these people. Okay? But like I said, I can only, I can only repeat what everybody else has said here. And everybody made good comments. But I think it's important that we get our constituents involved in this whole situation. Thank you.
All right, Strat, thank you. And again, yeah, I think that's important. We need to know what problems, people need to know what problems we're trying to solve. They need to fully understand them and we need to identify how we can improve a service that addresses many of the concerns that the people have raised. Who else? Melissa?
I didn't have, sorry, I didn't have any questions at this tone.
Are you sure, Melissa? Come on.
No, the questions I've asked was the same, going by what residents were concerned about was the pickup in the rear, what the rates are going to be. And just being the actual people that take the garbage cleaning up if they drop something because I've seen it plenty of times.
Thank you.
That was the main thing, but I don't know if we're going to be able to accommodate people that need a pickup in the rear. I've seen something in what Federal sent earlier today about, yeah, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Melissa. Continue on. I have a comment, but I'll wait for you to finish.
It said, it said, there was a bullet that said, in addition to standard rear alley service in some parts of the city, residents with documented hardship can request accommodation. What does that mean? Like they have to request, they have to have documents in order to get pickup in the rear, add, add and understand that?
Well, we'll ask the consultants to speak to that in a second. You know, my, my thoughts on that whole process would be if somebody has a true hardship and instead of hitting them with an inflated cost for some rear collection or collection off their porch, that it would be absorbed in the overall cost for people with true hardship. And perhaps there's options for people who do not have a true hardship, who would want some specialized service in the rear. And those are people who don't have a documented hardship, just want the convenience of it, whatever. And I'll ask the, the consultants to speak to that. And the other thing, Melissa, you mentioned was a lot of people complained about what's left in the streets. We've had extension, extensive discussions with Pedro and I'm sure it's been conveyed to, to, to Kevin and the consultants as well about making sure whoever the new contractor would be has a process in place to measure what they're leaving behind, clean it up and to hold them a little more accountable. But I, I don't want to promote that option. I just wanted to tell you that we, we just, because of all the feedback that people have emailed to us, it's been easy to channel those concerns to the administration and they've obviously responded to them. But Kevin and, and is it MSW? Your thoughts on some of Melissa's concern, please?
Yeah, if I can start off here. In terms of the rates, I don't want to get into talking about expectations too much because this is a, a public meeting where anybody who would bid on our proposal can hear what we're, we're talking about. And I don't want to say what we expect. What we know is that both nationally and locally, we are seeing some price increases. It's COVID, it's the markets, there's a variety of reasons. And doing this will help us offset some of those costs by increasing our efficiency, reducing that risk to anybody who's proposing. So this is probably a very good time actually to consider doing this in the face of rising costs nationally and locally. To your question about accommodations, I think that there's kind of two answers there. The first answer is we are looking at including rear alley collection in the RFP where it's feasible. Okay, some alleys may not be possible. Not every house has an alley. Right? But that will become a standard service where we are expecting contractors to serve those properties in the rear alley. Accommodations would be anything that goes above and beyond the standard service. So for example, we have a gentleman, I think on South Street with a ramp. Right? He's in a wheelchair. He called in one day and said, I'm having a hard time getting my trash outside. Can you help me? So what we do is we had him just fill out a form saying, yes, I do actually have a, a disability or a hardship. And he requested that we just pick up the trash at the top of his ramp at his house. And that's something we're able to provide. I think the key is it's not everybody gets whatever they want. It's if you need assistance, then we're going to provide you an accommodation. And that's what the accommodations really are about.
And there's another, another small one, but as, if we're getting into the details, we also wrote into, this is Steve from MSW Consultants. There's also a specification where the city can be approached by the collector and define a designated collection point. So sometimes you have a corner property and then two other properties that have side alleys or odd collection points. Or maybe they've got dogs in the back that may, but you can designate a, a separate collection point. Now, we don't want to do that all the time, but the point is to address these special collection requirements by having several options and then working with the contractor to execute those.
Yeah, and that might be something that works well in some of our neighborhoods that have, for example, maybe a corner property with steps in the front, but has a driveway that clearly faces the side. That would make a sensible option there, provide service on the side.
Yeah, guys, and I would like to add, you know, not only as part of the ongoing effort to educate the public, but to really have some input into this RFP model. I know I've shared with some of you over the years, the two, three, one, two, three hundred block of North and South history, which is in the core of the city, has out front collection and it's a mess. John Cisco used to clean the block up all the time in three hundred block. And the, the honest measure of it all is those houses, those, most of them are multi-use, would be easier collected in the rear. So those are the things we need to look at. There might be certain neighborhoods in the city that we designate simply as core and we use a different level of service in the rear for them. And we don't need to get into that tonight, but I wanted to mention that because I think there are some other specific areas that we could look at that would help. People used to drive, well, people do, they drive into work and to North history in the morning and they see these mountains of trash. So I just want to.
If I could as well, just to reiterate what has been said and some of my initial comments, because again, I take all the concerns as valid and, and nothing other than valid. One element of a long continuum of steps that need to be taken to get to a clean city. And why we need a clean city, I don't think I have to state it with this group or most people, is public health. Is public safety. Needles laying around in a corner, any kid can prick him or her hand. And then you have issues beyond, you know, you know, you can imagine. So why we need a clean city? Hopefully nobody is debating that. I believe the question is how do we get there? Does the administration has all the answers? No. That's why we work with you, but we also work with the experts on that, that this is what they do on a day in, day out basis like MSW, could be others. There's a lot of good questions, Johani. You talk about what are we doing to this day? You know, I will tell you, we've been in office five and a half months and we're already tackling a very divisive, tough issue. But I can tell you that as far as quality of life enforcement, we're already doing that. Has, which has been neglected for years. So you want to know why it hasn't happened is because we just got in, we just got in the opportunity to do it. So as we look at monies for education, the sweep enforcers and some of the other best practices that are, are taking place in other parts of the country, we're looking to learn from those. And maybe it's a matter of shifting the use of those two million dollars a year so that instead of being eighty-nine percent of that money for cleaning after the fact, if we do better on the end of the prevention and education, we, we save monies on the backend. You ask me right now what those numbers are? I don't know. But the experts suggest, and we've heard tonight, that these are the best practices around the country. So what is being proposed for Reading has already happened in dozens, if not hundreds, of communities around the country. And I bet you that they all had the same pressing challenges and the same heart-wrenching debate. But again, it's not about what is popular. In my mind, it's about what is right. And, and as far as engaging the public, the, the mayor is committed to, to creating task force, is committed to having town hall meetings. It, we're committed to so many. Again, keep in mind, five and a half months in office and the last three under COVID. So, you know, if we look at that standpoint, what I'm saying is, and to Melissa's point as well, is that the commitment is that within reason, and it was just said now, we want to make sure that we address the real concerns of our elderly, you know, community, the persons with disabilities, the indigenous. We're going to be looking to help everybody. And by the way, if you heard about the, the paving of the streets, that was noted by the MSW consultant, just in case you weren't clear about what that means. Right now Kevin can tell you that we, we have blocks of the, in the, in the city where a big trash collection truck goes by or five, six, ten, go by the very same street because that very same street is served by five, ten haulers. Which means that the street is being traveled the same day or within the same week by ten haulers. Whereas if you had a single hauler, you have just one truck. That's the type of investment that we need to look at. And I'm, you know, the mayor and I and others, we're looking for a dialogue, but we need to start somewhere. And we believe, and we, and the reason we're starting here is because we have the data and because our contract for the, for the municipal trash hauling is going to be up at the end of this year. And we're going to have to redo it and those are multi-year contracts. So that's why this issue was picked up now because time is truly of the essence.
All right, thank, thank you, Pedro. Melissa, so any other questions or thoughts you want to share? Because now's the time. Those were, those were good, good questions.
No, not right now. Thank you.
No, not right now. Thank you.
Okay. So there's, you know, we'll have a little more time. We're not voting on this same Monday. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna give ourselves a couple of weeks. The body's comfortable enough that we feel we've had enough chance to work with the administration to educate the public, gives everyone their own time too, to formulate in their own minds what they feel about this thing. So, don't want anybody to feel rushed. Talking to Kevin tonight, I think Pedro, I feel a little more comfortable that we have at least a couple of weeks. We don't want to wait too long, but we have a couple of weeks to, to put these bullet points together and get it out there. Who didn't have a chance to speak yet? Did I forget something? All right. Anybody else have any follow-up points or questions?
One last thing, Jeff. It's Johani. Linda, you want to go first?
I just was going to ask if I should put the ordinance in the, in a pending box for the 22nd?
Yeah, definitely for the 22nd.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Johani, go ahead.
So I just want to understand, you know, and thank you, Pedro, for that, because you're right. I mean, the administration has barely got started and then COVID hit. And that is why I wanted to know, you know, if we've maximized all of our efforts given the circumstances, because I know we have a lot of internal areas that we need to improve. Like even when you walk the streets, even the own sweepers aren't really cleaning up the trash as they should. That's one. Two, you know, is this, is going from a multiple hauler to a single hauler guarantee a cleaner city? And the third is, do we expect rate reduction for our entire city as a result of the single haul?
I mean, I can speak to that.
Oh, go ahead.
A little bit. Yeah. So, I mean, using the word guarantee is a very interesting, interesting question or, or word choice. So I can only speak for my experience and maybe John as well, he can comment. But in every case where I've seen a transition from multi-hauler to single hauler over the last 20 years, I've not only seen improvements, I've seen significant improvements in terms of the cleanliness of the city. I mean, it's been pretty significant. So, so I think it's absolutely realistic to expect a noticeable difference when you have citywide collections and the level of service that we're trying to provide. So, we're doing two things, increasing the customer service, getting a contractual relationship improved between the city and its sweep officers and how they can work cooperatively with the contractor. I think those things in the next few years will show up measurably. If you guys are using the litter index, for example, you should see pretty significant improvements.
And Johnny, to come back to your point about the street sweepers, street sweepers are a reactive approach. Once the litter's already in the street, then let's try and sweep it up. They're not capable of picking up large volumes of trash. It's not what they're designed for, right? We need to, we need to continue working on moving to a proactive approach to stop that litter from getting there in the street, right? Street sweepers can pick up some, but we can't manage the cleanliness of our city with just street sweepers alone. We need something else.
And I understand. It's just that even when the curb painting were taking place, like the yellow curbs, like you can literally see branches, like by the curb that were painted yellow. So instead of whoever was painting, picking up the branch and tossing in the trash, it's like they painted it along with the curb. You understand? So what I'm saying is that we need to assess our current operations overall as it relates to cleaning and trash before making a complete decision to go to single hauler, because I know there's some areas that we can tighten up. As I mentioned before, 80%, which is the great majority of the city already on a single hauler.
Councilwoman, my only point is, my point, my point is, there are many steps and they're not mutually exclusive. And they can run on a parallel track. But we're talking about procurement of a contract that ends at the end of this year. If you don't do this now, the fact is that you're delaying for a couple more years, because these RFPs are not just for one year. The older time and the energy and the money that is put into a proposal of this kind, or a request for proposal, is going to lead to two, three, four years. And the contract expires this year. So if we don't do it now, you're looking at four years just to address this issue. My fear is that this is based on the experience of other municipalities and the experts is one important element. And what I'm afraid is that we go ahead, first, we wouldn't have the money perhaps to get the sweep officers, because the cost probably will be the same or escalate. And then we can put a lot of time and energy into a lot of different measures, and still we don't address something that is at the heart, according to the experts, and I am not one of them. Time is of the essence because you have an expiring contract. It's not that we're rushing it because we're, there's nothing nefarious. The time is the time and it's unforgiving and not even COVID stopped that schedule. And so, to your point, is this along with a multiplicity of, of education, addressing the illegal dumping at the large scale that happens near the Pagoda and Skyline Drive, addressing the dumping, the Dana site, someone went and rammed a truck through the gate just a week ago, and up and dumped over 100 tires on that site. And what happened? Kevin's crew, Public Works, had to go out there and remove that. And we have a broken gate. So this issue's not going to address that necessarily. It won't, in fact. But, but so we are taking steps. And what steps, concrete are we taking? Where that same gate was, now we put concrete barriers. So if you want to run a tank through it, you try. But anyhow, I don't want to belabor the point, but by Council President, I thought I wanted to make that clear, because this is not mutually exclusive. And time is of the essence.
Yeah, it's giving me some thoughts here. I mean, these are all good points. Is we put our bullet points on this issue, that why, what the problems are and why we need to go to this system. And B, how the bullet points on how we're going to improve the existing city system, whatever you want to call it. And then maybe a third set of bullet points. By the way, here are subsequent things on top of this, we're going to help improve the city. And I know Kevin, you know, when Glenn was here, we were working on a certain milliliters of bags. I think we passed, I don't remember. You know, the actually curbside setting right now requires a minimum milliliter of, I don't know if milliliter is the term, thickness of bags. So, you know, those are things that we can start putting on the table and actually enforcing. Right now, you're too busy chasing trash because of the current setup that we're doing, we're not able to get out there and really deal with. And a new hauler could help us with that, who is not putting out the trash properly. Because that's what's ending up in the streets a lot of the times too, right? We can't always blame the hauler. If we have people putting out 15 bags, 15 giant, you know, shopping bags, those little plastic bags, and they fall apart and they rip apart, or the squirrels are eating at them or whatever, it's making it challenging for any hauler to pick that up. So those are things, along with some of the other things Pedro that you pointed out, that we could, we should be listing out when we get our bullet points together. These are some other actions the city plans on taking, that will supplement this process as well. I think that's, and we can talk about that more in the coming days as we formulate these bullet points. Because to me, I think that's our next step, get bullet points in order and figure out what the strategy is going to be to communicate to the public, as well as assist with any input we can on the RFP. Any other questions or comments?
Jeff, could Kevin, could Kevin explain why in his view, it'd be best to do this now, rather than take the one-year contract extension that would give us a bit more time to have public education and consider options?
So, it's a question. Yes, there is a one-year extension option on the contract. However, as we kind of stated already, this is, this is about improving our services and addressing this and tackling them now. So, I think it's in the best interest of the city, and I think our consultants would agree to go out and do a new RFP now and get the services we need and build the systems we need with our contractor, with sweep programs, so we can start addressing these issues now. It's not just about how many households are included, but if we don't address it now, we're going to really be delaying a lot of other tactics that are going to depend on this relationship.
Yeah, I agree with that, Kevin.
Well, and this thing is Donna's state, it can get very political. And, you know, we're all in the political world here. But I, at the end of the day, I'm trying to understand what the problem is and get it solved, and have enough time to at least educate the public on what decisions we're making. So they don't believe we're just making arbitrary decisions just for the sake of making them. So, you know, I think we have five, you know, four or five weeks at most, maybe. I know Pedro would like to see that shortened down, but according to what Kevin told me, you know, if we got an RFP out by the end of July, we'd be okay. So we have some time to communicate this and contemplate it amongst ourselves. So it doesn't look like we're making a decision in two weeks. There are some real problems with this process. And I feel more educated after this week on what those problems are and what these types of solutions have brought to other communities. I think the consultants have done a good job explaining that 95% of the cities across the country are under this model and have seen significant, oh, where I wrote it down, litter measurements, whatever, litter improvements. Not, and I wasn't just to use this as the only effort, but as a starting point, so that we're not chasing hauler lists and trying to figure out who has a hauler and who doesn't. Who's putting the trash on Donna's pile or taking it off my pile and putting it on? I mean, it's like playing checkers with a lot of people, especially investors. Not all of them are bad, but some are out there gaming the system, trying, you know, trying to, to take advantage of it. Now, when I say that, not all of them, but it only takes 10% of them to cause big problems. So we, as a body, have to work with the administration over the coming weeks to communicate the issues to the public, get a lot of feedback, and then finally make a decision. I can tell you that personally, I'm tired of talking about trash, and I'm tired of seeing parts of our city look like trash as well. So if there's an effort that can improve our city, I'm all for it. I'm not somebody moving in and out of the city. I'm not buying properties and renting them out. This is my home. I walk these streets every day. As some of you know, I pick up a lot of trash off these streets. So, you know, to me, it's very important, in one of the prettiest cities that I've ever seen, the last thing we should have is a trash problem. So we've got to find solutions. There's been a pretty strong argument presented tonight. I would, you know, I would commend, not commend, I would motivate my councils if there's additional questions, to get them to Pedro and to Kevin as soon as possible. I want to thank MSW for being on the line. I feel there's going to be a need to bring you back for some public discussions as well. And this is a very emotional issue for some people. And we have to remind all these callers that, I know, I had a, I had a private hauler for 20 years, and I had a close relationship with them. And I eventually went to the city program because it just made more sense for me, first of all. But second of all, you know, even though it was an emotional decision, I felt I was doing the right thing for the city as well. And sometimes what may not be the best thing for one of us individually, is the best thing for the city. And we have to, if that's where we end up, we have to be able to frame that argument so people clearly understand. And don't, and they, and they don't believe it's just a bunch of hot air. Because, you know, people, the last thing they want to hear is a bunch of hot air. So, any other comments or thoughts?
I just want to leave one.
Yeah?
One that wasn't addressed. Kevin mentioned this, but I think it's significant as it relates to what you just said and what the lady asked about why now. So there's been a significant disruption in the solid waste market. And so there are, there will be higher costs for residents who are paying for trash and recycling services. So, waste management and all the other industry have talked about COVID, and they are prepared to raise the rates. Disposal tip fees are going up, single stream processing has gone up dramatically. So, the way I would phrase that for the city, and as you're making this decision, these costs are going to happen. And by going out for a comprehensive level of service for all of the eligible units, that will probably be your most significant opportunity to keep their trash bills affordable. Because those costs are coming.
Yeah, I want to feed into that quick, because you just added an element to that that I didn't think about. You know, to me, if I told all the people on the private hauler system that we want to put them in the city system, so we can keep our rates low, that wouldn't go over well, probably. But, but, when I hear that rates are going up, that means, that tells me the cat and mouse game is going to get a little bigger. Because as the costs go up, people, people are probably going to try to game this system even more. That's the angle I'm viewing that at. That's my biggest concern. Is if trash gets more expensive, guess what? More and more people are going to try to find a way to avoid paying for it.
Correct. That's correct. Well, and it's also the contingency, the risk factor is known by the other haulers. So the non-incumbents that would want to bid are aware of that as well. And so they, they have a little bit more risk. So their ability to compete and provide you a very competitive rate is kind of diminished. And so what we're trying to do is establish a procurement process where we get a qualified hauler at a very competitive rate. And you're really not in a good position for that, because there's just too much uncertainty in your solid waste system.
Steve, this is John. If I may just throw in real quick, I think to make that black and white, the waste collection business is a business that is influenced by scale. A question I think was asked earlier, is there a price advantage to going to 100% coverage of the households from the current number of households? And I, I believe that apples to apples, there absolutely is. Collection's a business that operates bigger scale, lower unit costs. So to speak to what Steve said about, I completely agree that pricing for collection, disposal, and processing are increasing. The way the city mitigates that is through capitalizing on its scale. And I think that's another important benefit of going this direction.
All right. I'm going to ask Kevin, that you work with MSW on some five or six bullet points? I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Pedro to ask Kevin. Sorry about that. We'll have an offline discussion about that. Counsel, I would ask that everybody continue to forward questions. I'm going to work with Martin and others and Pedro on kind of a public outreach, and everybody should have input to that as well. So, let's, let's leave tonight's evening with an understanding. We're going to try to take the public on what we're dealing with. Doesn't mean you're telling them yay or nay at this point. You're trying to educate them with the problems. As we go through that process, we'll educate ourselves even more, which is, which is a good thing. And then in a few weeks, we'll have to make a decision. So, I hope everyone got a lot of information. I want to thank again, MSW and Kevin and Pedro for a lot of questions being answered, and counsel and the citizens for forwarding a lot of concerns and questions as well. So if there's nothing else, we have, we don't have anything else on the agenda for, for tonight, am I correct?
No, we don't.
Does anybody else have anything for public discussion that we need to discuss this evening?
Jeff?
Yeah?
I was asked by several people, what's our chances of getting back into council chambers with the public?
Oh, whoo, I'm going to kind of defer that to Elizabeth at this point. I hate to put you on the spot, Elizabeth. I know there's a lot of unknowns, so.
I, I don't think we can answer that question right now. We have to wait and see what our status is in terms of yellow, green. And we're still making determinations and bringing our own employees back. And then at some point, we will begin to think about opening to the public. So we, we really don't have an answer to that yet, but we'll keep you posted.
Well, let me, let me go beyond that. Forget the public. When would it be possible for council to be seated together in the chambers?
Same answer?
Yes.
Good question, Stratt. Yeah, it's unclear at this time.
I think, I think it's still a little too soon, but, but we're certainly working towards that.
Okay. I've been asked and I'm inquired.
All right. Good question. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. If there are no other comments, we will adjourn. Thank you, everyone. And we will continue on next Monday night. Linda, we don't have anything before then, correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.